Delete another flag and a prayer.
Will you join me in prayer? God, our Creator, you made us all in your own image, but little lower than the angels. When you gave the law to Moses, you commanded us to love our neighbors as ourselves, and that we must welcome the foreigner in our midst to provide comfort to the stranger. Teach us to be hospitable here in Talbot County, whether to tourists vacationing here or immigrants and migrants who have escaped violence or poverty to find a better future for their families here. God is in wisdom and compassion to lead your people here in Talbot County. In your most holy name, we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lusher, appreciate that. Okay, tonight's agenda is before us, August 28th, before us. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda, council? Okay, hearing none, the chair agenda accepted by unanimous consent, okay? Next is the minutes for July 11th and July 25th. Councils had time to look over the minutes. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes?
No.
Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. And next is the dispersments of August 1st and August 8th. Councils had a chance to review them. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the dispersments? Okay, hearing none, that the chair moves that the dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, so first up tonight on the agenda is an update for the Chesapeake Multicultural Center. You guys want to come on up? Yeah, come on up.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm Matthew Peters, the Executive Director of the Chesapeake Multicultural Resource Center. And with me is our outreach coordinator, Victoria Gomez. We're here to give you just kind of an update. We just celebrated our 10th year anniversary this year, which I think most all were at or saw. Thank you for that, so kind of an update of our 10 years, really. CHESMRC has been around. We became incorporated in 2013. We were first started as a project underneath the Midshore Community Foundation. Our home was at the Oasis Covenant Church when we first started. And our first project for the first couple of years was running after-school programming for immigrant children and children of recent immigrants. That project still continues today. It has grown greatly since we first started just doing some homework help at the church. For a period of five years, we were involved in a very large state grant to increase that project and hold it at Easton Elementary School. And for this year, we still have the same goals that we had when we began, which is to engage the community through this program. We'll be starting in mid-September again with our goal of about 70 children as our enrollment. We run four days of after-school programming every day or for those days with a hot meal, followed by enrichment programming. We include Cub Scouts into that for both the boys and the girls. We do STEM activities, healthy habits through Talbot Family Network is a nutritional program we run with them, games, arts and crafts. We do field trips, and it's a very great after-school program. We do that at the same time with the BAM program, so they're two great programs that we run together. And I think overall combined, it's about 150, 160 children that receive programming through those two activities every day after school through at Easton Elementary. Now, our resource center, which has grown from just using a coat closet in the church to our own building now on Dover Street, has grown. We went from three full-time staff in 2019 to now we have seven full-time staff, and we are looking for an eighth full-time staff employee at the moment. Our direct services we do is immigration services. We are an accredited organization through the Department of Justice, so we can legally represent clients through immigration cases. This year alone, I've done 1,500 cases already, and we're only in August, so that service continues to grow. We are also certified health navigators, so Victoria and Estella can help people get direct assistance with applying for Medicaid and health insurance. We are also accredited to do SNAP benefits and other benefits. And we also are bilingual, so all of our staff speak at least two languages. Most of us speak Spanish and English, and we now have a full-time Haitian Creole speaker on staff as well. So we're excited to, this year, we're focusing on expansion into other counties. We love Talbot County, but historically, about 75% of our clients do come from Talbot County. Over the past year, we've been expanding our services in the Caroline County, and we've grown that greatly over the year. And our goal is to now set up a satellite office in the Federalsburg area to focus specifically on the Haitian population that lives there. So in terms of numbers, we have currently served 6,900 clients in the region that come from 16 different Maryland counties, Delaware, and Virginia. And most still reside here in Talbot County. And our services has grown. And this past fiscal year, 2023, we provided 4,703 unique services, which is up from about 1,500 services that we provided in fiscal year 17. So every time we add a staff member, we grow a lot. We're very happy to have been partnering with Talbot County over the years, especially through the pandemic. It's really one we were able, through your assistance and coordinated efforts, grow our staff to meet the needs, which exposed a lot more need than we knew was there during that. And the support was significant enough that we were able to sustain that and grow even more. So we thank Talbot County for everything it does for our organization.
I guess I just want to extend also the thank you for your constant support. It takes a village, right, as we said, and it takes all this team to make what we're doing so far. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, I want to thank you for the tour that you provided us last week, I think it was. I certainly have had encounters with clients of CHESMRC over the years, particularly through the scouting program, but I didn't have visibility to the other, into some of the other aspects of your program. For example, how many people that you are helping to ensure get proper documentation, get there, get through the process, help navigate their way through the legal process. And that's really impressive that you're able to, that you've been able to serve so many people in that way, and so many people who are contributing to our community.
Thank you, Mr. Lusher.
So I just want to thank you guys for all that you do. When I came to the event with you celebrating your 10th year anniversary, to see a colleague from Anorundal County there was very surprising because they have someone that handles that area from Anorundal County. But you do a lot for the community, and I just want to commend and thank you for all that you do.
Yep, and I just want to, you know, thank you for all you do, too, that's for sure. So the council definitely is there for you guys.
Madam Secretary, would you mind go ahead and read the recognition into the record, please?
Certificate of Recognition Chesapeake Multicultural Resource Center. Whereas in 2012, the Chesapeake Multicultural Resource Center, CHESMRC, located in Easton, was established with the vision to aid non-English speaking individuals in our community and the surrounding area in obtaining the services they need to become successful and engage members of our community, all while in a multicultural setting that is economically productive, politically engaged, and socially committed to human dignity. And whereas to date, CHESMRC has assisted approximately 6,500 non-English speaking individuals by offering programs including citizenship classes, immigration consultations, case management services and clinics, providing referrals to appropriate agencies for matters related to health, housing, legal and labor matters, and social services, and providing employer advice. And whereas, CHESMRC has also provides after-school tutoring and mentoring programs to youth of all ages and partners with local organizations, including the Scouts, YMCA, Talbot Mentors, and Parks and Recreation to engage youth in the wider community. And whereas, by providing services and programs to newly arrived citizens in our community, CHESMRC furthers its goal of empowering individuals from different cultures with an opportunity to obtain legal residency and citizenship. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby award the certificate of recognition to CHESMRC in gratitude and recognition for their dedication to serving individuals new to our nation and community over the past 10 years, and offer best wishes for continued success in the future, given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 8th day of August in the year of our Lord 2023.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, is there a motion?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second to go ahead and approve the certificate as presented. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay, sounds good. Go down there and hand, yep, yep. Yep, you guys want to come on up? Be great.
All right, guys, one, two, three. Looking good.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Brian, you want to come on up? Yep, update on the replacement of the fibrillators and the, for the county parks.
Good evening, council. If I could, could I invite Wayne Diet, our president of the Talbot Paramedic Foundation?
Sure.
And Nicole James, representing Team Trace. So thank you for the opportunity to come up this evening and just give a quick update, to just give a quick update on the AED and the Talbot County Parks project that's going on. So I'd really like to turn it over to Wayne Diet or Nicole to talk about this. They're really leading this charge. We're just a happy participant to this. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Wayne Diet.
Okay, welcome.
Good afternoon, council. Thanks for having the opportunity to present before you today on a very exciting program that about a year or so ago, I came before you and talked about our external defibrillator program, public access program. And we've expanded that program, and we had the thoughts that we wanted to expand that program into all county parks in Talbot County to provide the care that would be needed in such an event that there was emergency that needed assistance for immediate care. I'm proud to present today that that program is up and running, and we are making great strides in community access defibrillation in our county. We have completed Northeaston Park. Northeaston Park has four automated external defibrillator for public access. We just finished Idah Wild Park. Idah Wild Park has two automated external defibrillators. Home Run Baker Park is completed. Our next park to go into will be probably Easton Middle School Parks. That's a project there, and then we will move on from there. Through the partnership with Team Trace, they have partnered with us, and they've been a great partner and a great asset. Through their kind of partnership with us, we've been able to provide all the materials and costs for all these external defibrillator stations throughout the county. We are excited to the fact that the county supports us, County Council supports us. Department of Emergency Services is our backbone for this whole project. They do all the maintenance and checking on all the equipment that we need and the procurement through the county. The main thing that we want to talk about today is that as our program is growing and we get out into the communities, there's a need for the people to know that they're there. We are finding out that we've placed them, and we sat them there, and we've installed them, but people are noticing them but don't know what they're there for. So we have initiated, starting last week, we're in all the parks on the weekends, trying to get out, we're setting up booths and tables out there and showing hands-only CPR, how to use an AED, telling the people where they're located, what's in them, and how they, how to use them, what they're there for. The other part of our segment of our program is that we have grown to the point where we have added things to our, to our existing program. So the cabinets now have, they have opioid overdose kits in them for available for case of opioid overdose, and they also have stop-the-bleed kits in them, and they also have automated external defibrillators. With that program increasing in scope, we have changed the name of our program from the Save Station Program to Talbot Cares, and CARE standing for Cardiac Rescue Emergency Stations. So when you hear us refer now, it won't be from the old Save Station. It's the same program, but it's now Talbot Cares. Nicole represents the Team Trace Foundation. They're our community partner in this deal, like I said. I'd like her to say a few words if she would.
Yeah.
Thank you for having us this evening. Hi. Team Trace was started in honor of our godson, Trace, who passed away from complications from a congenital heart defect surgery when he was a little over three. We started in 2012 and have worked towards beginning of life therapy, so we support research out of Children's National Medical Center. And then we found this great partnership, looking for community outreach for AED installation. And we're so grateful, as the last group spoke, it takes the village, and it couldn't be more true. So our partnership with Wayne and the Paramedic Foundation, and Brian, and Matt, and Rachel, who you'll meet later, is truly, it could never happen without many hands making light work. So one in 100 kids are born with a congenital heart defect, and one in 300 have an electrical issue that they don't know about, oftentimes until they're in trouble in cardiac arrest. So when Wayne talks about our next park being, hopefully, the park there at Easton Middle School, if you've driven by there on a Saturday morning or an after-school time, it's well-used, well-loved, and there's lots of children running around it. So I can think of no better group to protect than the children of Talbot County. And this team has done a great job in making sure that that happens. For every minute that someone needs defibrillation or the use of an AED that they don't receive it, they decrease their chance of survival by 10%. So we try to work on a standard. We all take turns going out there together with at least two or three of us and walking each one of these parks to make sure that in our best brisk walk, there is somebody that has left and returned to the victim within three minutes to increase their chance of survival. So these towers are heated and cooled because we know the great swings in temperature here in Talbot County to protect the AEDs. And so together, we've worked with Gunther's Electric, who is also a community partner here and provides all the electricity, which can be a challenge in rural areas, as Wayne can attest to at Home Run Baker. Gunther's looked for days for some electric out there to make sure that these towers are able to be rescue-ready at all times for our community. And while we're pediatric-focused, anytime we install an AED, it protects any spectator for your grandparents or your neighbor, your spouse or significant other, so that we're all, as participants and spectators, safer than we were before they were installed. So I appreciate the support from Talbot County. These guys here, if you look back at their history, have been a pillar of this community as far as the Paramedic Foundation goes, for years volunteering their time to run 24-hour service before it was even a thing. And so I can't speak to their character and their commitment to the county and the people who live here, as well as DES. There is no better compliment than having other counties constantly reach out and say, who are you working with and what are they doing, and can we have their number because we want them to show us the way? And that's happening weekly.
Right.
So thank you for your support, and again, we appreciate the opportunity.
Okay. Discussion, I'm just seeing.
Just, you know, want to say thank you from the first time you came in and presented to the council. This is a, you know, vital need in our county, and we're just thankful for the foundation, but also for Brian and the work that you're doing as well, because we do want to protect not only the children that are here, but everyone, the citizens of Talbot County, should the need arise. We want to be proactive in that, so thanks again.
Ditto.
Again, thank you for funding this. We know, we know that this has already saved lives in Talbot County. We know that the wider availability of it will save more in the future. This is, this is such a valuable service. So thanks to the Talbot Paramedic Foundation, thanks to Team Trace for funding this really important work, and to the emergency services team who are training a lot of our citizens, including me, just a couple months ago, when they trained me and a number of my staff down at Chesapeake Bay Maritime Museum. So having that, I mean, these things are easy to use, but getting past that, just having that familiarity through those training programs is also valuable. So thanks for all you're doing. This will save lives.
Mr. President, I'd like to recognize Mr. Bill Wilson, one of our board members that's here with me today. Bill is the chairman of our AED program through Talbot Paramedic Foundation.
Okay, that's, that's great. Hey, Mr. Step, you want to say a few words? Mr. Step?
Absolutely, I'd love to. Just to Wayne, thank you again for keeping this push going on in the county. Brian, thank you as well. And Nicole, thank you also for coming in and sharing your story. It's been wonderful getting to know you and your family over the many years we spent on the ballfield. So thank you for coming on in and sharing with us, and just thank you for keeping, keeping the fight pressing forward.
Yep, yep, and I just want to, like my colleague said, Wayne, you know, we go way back, you know, I mean, the start of the Paramedic Foundation, I think it started '84 or '83?
'82 and...
'82. Yep, yep, so I mean, that's, that was a big deal, and it's been flying high ever since, and all you guys have saved a mess alive since then, and we're really, really, I don't even know the words, I mean, really appreciative of, you know, what you've guys done over the years and the dedication of day in and day out, in the middle of the night, in bad weather, and, you know, even running through this pandemic in the last three years or so, just keeping up with everything. So we really appreciate your dedication, that's for sure.
We appreciate the support, thank you.
Yep, and so, Madam Secretary, we've had, we have a few certificates, if you don't mind reading them, so we could hand them out, that would be great.
I believe Mr. Luskey has some as well.
Okay.
So these are going to be for the next presentation, so there's, should be two proclamations.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep, yep.
As usual, Susan, you are on top of things. So I'd like to introduce Rachel Cox. She's our special programs paramedic.
Okay.
And she works very closely with these two groups to organize this effort, so...
We have, just, I'll just read what it says, and we'll take a couple pictures.
Okay.
Talbot County DES, like we've already mentioned, works, I work very closely with Nicole and Mr. Wayne, just about on an everyday basis. I call them, they calling me, emails and such, and they put a lot of time volunteer into this. So I wanted to, Talbot County Department of Emergency Services recognizes Talbot Paramedic Foundation and Team Trace for your support, partnership, and unwavering dedication in providing lifesaving technology for the citizens and visitors of Talbot County. So I'm going to go ahead and present you guys with these rewards. It's my better half he serves on our...
All right, guys, ready? One, two, three.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. So you guys can stand right there. We also do have county proclamations for both...
Two proclamations, yeah. Yep, so she can read, yep. Which one you going to read first?
Talbot Paramedic Foundation.
Okay, that's fine.
Certificate of Recognition Talbot Paramedic Foundation, Inc. Whereas since its founding in 1988, the Talbot Paramedic Foundation, Inc., Talbot Paramedic Foundation, has helped provide the Talbot County Department of Emergency Services with advanced life support equipment and public access automated external defibrillator, AED machines. And whereas the generous financial contributions of the Talbot Paramedic Foundation, supported by the residents and businesses of Talbot County, play a continuing crucial role in the provision of emergency care to the citizens of and visitors to Talbot County. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby award the certificate of recognition to the Talbot Paramedic Foundation for their dedication to emergency care for the benefit of all, and offer our most sincere gratitude and thanks for their efforts, given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 8th day of August in the year of our Lord 2023.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Bill, you're, who's, you're president of the foundation, right?
Wayne.
Wayne, yeah, Wayne, come on up.
Can I get Bill to?
Sure.
How do you call that up? I've been with you guys for a long time, and the dedication, like I was just saying, of you guys really sticking in this for the last 30, 35 years means a lot to council, the public, the community. I mean, you live and breathe this stuff, and you save many a life, that's for sure. So I'm personally glad that you've stuck around and dedicated a lot of your life in doing this stuff. I mean, you know, I don't know how, you know, the words that you do really mean a lot to people, and what you've created and touched people's lives and stuff mean a lot to people, you know? So I really, I'm glad, I'm glad to know you, I'm glad to be around you guys and be a part of this. And, you know, this gentleman right over here is a big part of EMS, too. And, you know, there's a, there's a lot of, there's a team effort here, that's for sure.
Absolutely.
That really, it really takes a team to really be able to do all this. So I just wanted to personally thank you.
Thank you.
And council, you know, you make us all look good, and it's just, it's a pleasure being with you guys. I know I'm a little sketchy on this stuff, but I, I get kind of teared up with it, too, because I was in the service with you guys, and, you know, it's, it's, you know, when you go into emergencies, it doesn't matter, you just want to be able to save lives, and that's, that's what we're all about, and I appreciate everything you guys, yep.
Okay, Madam Secretary, you want to read the next one?
Certificate of Recognition Team Trace. Whereas Team Trace, an organization dedicated to fighting congenital heart disease, was founded in memory of Kenneth Daryl Trace Knight III, who passed away from a congenital heart defect in June 2012 at three years of age. And whereas since its founding, Team Trace has not only helped raise funding for increased research of this deadly disease... research of this deadly disease, but has helped provide the Talbot County Department of Emergency Services with funding for the purchase of advanced life support equipment and public access automated external defibrillator, AED machines. And whereas the generous financial contributions of Team Trace, supported by the residences, residents and businesses of Talbot County, play a continuing crucial role in the provision of emergency care to the citizens of and visitors to Talbot County. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby award this certificate of recognition to Team Trace for their dedication to emergency care for the benefit of all and offer our most sincere gratitude and thanks for their efforts, given under our hands in the great seal of Talbot County this eighth day of August in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. So, Team Trace, you guys want to come on up?
Thank you.
That's for sure.
Thank you very much.
Are you ready?
Mm-hmm.
One, two, three.
Counsel, if I could-
Yeah, sure.
So, going back to what Wayne Die was talking about, that they're really trying to get the word out to the community about CPR and AED and getting this training in advance, if I could invite Rachel Cox up to give a brief demonstration to council, but more importantly, to all those that are joining us via television. And to show, just to show how simple this is, but it is a huge, has a huge impact at the end, which we'll talk about after her demonstration, hopefully.
Okay. Do you want to do that now?
If we could, if that's okay with council.
So, I think, Ma- Ma- Madam Secretary, we've got one more recognition, right?
Cue this up.
Cue that up.
Yeah.
It may roll right into it.
Yep, okay, roll right into it. I got you, buddy. Got you, come on up.
So, again, this is Rachel Cox as a special programs paramedic. She handles all of our public access AEDs as well as all of our public CPR training.
Got you, okay.
You can put it right here.
Also have Lieutenant Dave Hall, he's one of my CPR, my Arden County CPR instructors. Okay, so, we talked about hands-only CPR is very effective. We offer, our department is American Red Cross and American Heart Association certified instructors. We have approximately fifteen instructors on our staff, so we do provide that for the community. So, if anyone's interested in a CPR class, they can go to the Talbot County DES website, talbotdes.org and click on the Operation Save Heart link, it has my contact information there, so you can contact us. So, quick, just demonstration of basically what CPR. If, have a, a person or a victim or anyone that you come across who's, appears to be unconscious, you want to make sure that they're responsive or not responsive. So, that's just a simple S, hey, hey, are you okay, are you okay? At this point, if they're, they don't moan, they don't groan, they don't say anything, they're considered unresponsive. So, you need to have someone call nine-one-one and then that's when you want to check for breathing. If the patient's not breathing and they're unresponsive, they are in cardiac arrest and you must act quickly. So, calling nine-one-one and having someone go hit an external, automated external defibrillator is the best chances for survival. So, just a quick demonstration of what CPR looks like. We teach our students to use the heel of their hand in the center of the chest, interlacing your fingers, making sure you're directly over top of the person, locking your elbows and you're going to push straight down. So, you're going to do that for as long as you can until someone's there to help you or an external defibrillator arrives and you're able to apply that. And then you, when you're on the phone, nine-one-one, they can also give you instructions on what to do as well. So, the goal is a hundred to a hundred twenty beats per minute, so you need to go pretty fast. So, another one song we like to sing our, our heads is the Bee Gees' Stay Alive, everyone's heard that song. So, we use that song because it's like an upbeat, upbeat tempo to use, so you kind of just do that in your head. Down at least two inches on the center of the chest.
Okay.
And then our, you have a trainer here, so all of our classes, we have AED trainers. This is the CR2 model, more specifically that Team Trace and the Paramedic Foundation have sponsored in all of the outdoor Talbot Care Towers. This is the exact model. So, we're able to provide the community and the students with an exact model replica of what AED they would grab out of that cabinet. So, that's, that's very crucial, gives them a good idea of exactly how it works. And it's very simple. All AEDs typically come on when you turn on the lid-
Adult mode.
Or press the on button.
Remove all clothing from patient's chest.
And as you can hear, it's telling you what to do.
Pull red handle to reveal pads.
So, I'm going in slow motion, but all the pads have pictures.
Apply pads to bare skin exactly as shown in the pictures. Press pads firmly. Apply pads to bare skin.
So, then, once it detects that the pads-
Do not touch patient.
It's going to tell you, don't touch the patient.
Analyzing heart rhythm.
And it's going to determine if it needs to defibrillate the patient or not.
Everyone clear, press flashing button.
Everyone clear, whoever's operating the AED, go ahead, can go ahead and press the button.
Shock delivered. Provide chest compressions to the beat. The heel of one hand should be in center of chest, the other hand should be on top of first hand.
So, that specific model gives you that metronome, that beat that I was talking about and it walks you and talks you through all of the steps. So, regardless of if you've had training, the AED does help and the dispatchers are very, very good about providing instructions over the phone as well, but having that hands-on training is crucial. You kind of, you are able to ask us questions and, and anything scenario you may have been in or something you've thought about, we're definitely can help you with that. So, and like I said, you can visit the website and check it out and get my contact information, can get you set up for classes.
I have one question, is that like a one-time use?
So, no, the pads are one-time use, the battery, depending on how many times the patient has been defibrillated, it is a lithium battery, it's good for five to six years. So, what happens is, in this specific instance, if one of our county-sponsored AEDs is used, it comes back to me, I test the battery and make sure that everything's working properly, I replace the pads and get it back out to where it can be.
Got you, that's great. That's great.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. I appreciate the demonstration.
Yeah, that was great.
By, by the demonstration, we're hoping that more people will be more apt to take the, take the training and find out what it's all about before they ever need it.
Right.
So, if I could, I would like to invite Division Chief Matt Watkins up to just talk about why this is so important. This kind of puts a bow on everything we've talked about so far, that the, the need for AEDs in our community, the need for CPR in our community is great and this is a story about save. So, I will, I'll turn it over to Matt and let him discuss an incident that just occurred and we have some family members here to, to celebrate.
So, good evening. I have no problem, I have an amazing story. So, on the morning of, morning of July seventeenth, an ordinary summer day, turned to Pan for the Gunshannon family, when husband and father, Jim Gunshannon, was found unresponsive and barely breathing. His family called nine-one-one for him as he was taking his last breaths. Jim's son, Sean Gunshannon, then did something that was incredibly brave and unthinkably difficult, he started CPR on his own father. Sean knew CPR from his, from his training in the, in the Boy Scouts. While Sean was doing CPR, nine-one-one communications specialist dispatched EMS in the sheriff's office and then they stayed on the phone with the Gunshannon family to provide instruction, support and encouragement until the paramedics and deputies arrived. As, as the council's already aware, all, all of our, any cardiac arrest in Talbot County, there is a police response that goes with it as well because all of our law enforcement are, are trained in CPR and they also have AEDs that were in their vehicles that were provided by the Talbot Paramedic Foundation. After several minutes on the scene, responders were able to get a pulse back on Mr. Gunshannon. He was eventually transported to Shore Regional Health at Easton Emergency Department where advanced stabilizing care continued and he was able to make a full recovery and is seated behind me with his family. Seated behind me on this side are representatives from the nine-one-one center, the sheriff's office, EMS and the emergency department. So, our purpose for being here tonight is twofold. Number one, we want to highlight just how many people, how many people it takes to, to save a life and to celebrate the amazing group of stakeholders that we have here within Talbot County and that includes the Paramedic Foundation and Team Trace. And secondly, and more importantly, we want to recognize Sean Gunshannon for his actions that morning, that was only three weeks ago. We, we, we know that, we've been shown time and time again that early CPR saves lives and I believe that it had not been for Sean's actions that morning, we would not be here before you this evening.
That's great, that's great.
So, we do have a few lifesaving awards that we'd like to hand out.
Absolutely.
First and foremost to Sean Gunshannon.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to tie this into a proclamation, so we can do it all together if you would like, it's up to you.
I can.
Council.
Yeah. Can we start there? That's fine.
Counsel's commendation to Sean Fergie Gunshannon. Whereas on Monday, July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, approximately seven oh eight AM, Talbot County Emergency Services received a call for a reported cardiac arrest at a home in Easton, Maryland. And whereas, prior to arrival of emergency services personnel, you initiated cardiopulmonary resuscitation CPR procedures, a result of training you had previously received, which resulted in helping to save the life of your father. Therefore, in recognition of your selfless service and dedication to your family during this traumatic event, we hereby bestow upon you as a token of the esteem and gratitude of our community, this certificate of commendation.
Okay.
So, in addition to that, we do have a lifesaving award and we could, we just present them together.
Okay.
So, this is from the Talbot County Department of Emergency Services. Be it hereby known to all that this lifesaving award is being bestowed to Sean Gunshannon in recognition for your outstanding performance and heroic action on July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. By performing lifesaving measures and CPR on the victim of a sudden cardiac arrest, you played a key role in saving Mr. Gunshannon's life. We appreciate your dedication to learning first aid and CPR to help our community.
That's great, that's great. You want to come on up?
And if I could, counsel, I'd like to introduce the rest of the team that was involved with saving Mr. Gunshannon's life. I will hand them over to, to Matt if you want to. Yep, if we can, you want to call him up?
Sure.
So, okay. So, if we could, the, the first person that would have been there is the Talbot County Sheriff's Office.
Okay.
So, Sergeant Joey Tins.
Okay, so we have Paramedic Daniel Lloyd. Nine-one-one Community Basin Specialist Josh Willis. ENT Alexander Jewer. Paramedic Dave Hall. Paramedic Captain Ben Diffenberger. And Communication Specialist RJ Jones. ENT Tony Capella. Last but not least, Shore Regional Health Emergency Department, sure, let's come up with that.
So, if we could, bring everybody together, so this is exactly what we were talking about, it really does take a team to save one life and this is the team that was there that day, so. Mr. Gunshannon, there you are. Would you like to come up and say anything or you should definitely be in this picture with this picture. And if anybody else from Shore Regional Health wants to, to come up.
So, my name is Carrie Gunshannon, I'm the wife of the patient and it's just an honor to be able to see all of you and realize how many of you did extraordinary things on that day to save my husband's life. And I want to say thank you, but it just seems so inadequate and the words seem so small for the incredible act that you did. And we are a family with five kids, ages eighteen, sixteen, fourteen and twelve and you didn't just save one man that day, you saved our family and we will have Christmases and celebrations and wonderful memories all because of you. So, thank you all very, very much for the important work that you do and doing it so well. Thank you, we'll be forever grateful.
Thank you, thank you all, appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel, appreciate the time.
Okay, let's get, let everybody get out, that's hard to top that one, that's for sure, you know? It's really, that's what it's all about, that's for sure, that's what it's all about.
Dedicated hearts that save our hearts.
Yep. Okay, so, next on the agenda is this discussion about the letter about mail-in Department of Environmental. Yep, yep, you guys want to come on up? Yep, Ray. Hey, Mr. Clark, how you doing, sir? Good, good, how you doing?
So, I'll just give a review of the letters and Mr. Clark here can talk a little more about the report and review as well because that ties into this. So, on July twenty-first, we received a letter and a subsequent email from DeNora Delmasi at MDE. This is following up on her letters from April twenty, April twenty-fourth and May ninth regarding the water and sewer maps for TRAP and the EDUs for all phases of the lakeside development. So, regarding the maps, Ms. Delmasi stated that the, the draft maps that we had provided to clarify the existing water and sewer classifications for the town, which we're also shown at the work sessions for the town, appeared to meet the intent of MDE's classification request regarding the EDUs and also in follow-up to the, the work session the council had on July nineteenth. Ms. Delmasi stated that MDE is seeking EDUs for all phases of the lakeside development regardless of the existing classic water and sewer classifications. She's requesting that the first phase be final and that the remaining phases be best estimates as far as is currently known. She stated that both the draft water and sewer maps and, and the EDUs should be submitted to MDE by August thirty-first and this can either be done as part of the, part of the draft twenty twenty-three report of the review or in standalone amendment resolutions. So, discussing this with Mr. Clark, he's advised that the draft twenty twenty-three report of the review is ready to be publicly released for stakeholder review and comment. The draft maps that we provided to MDE have already been incorporated in that because they just contain the existing- because they just contain the existing water and sewer classifications. And he and I can easily work together to incorporate the EDU language in advance of the next council meeting. So we're, we're seeking direction from the Council on, on whether we should proceed with drafting standalone resolutions or whether we can incorporate these items in, in the draft report of the review. And either of those could be accomplished on, on August twenty-second. So my, my, my recommendation, I think the, the, the most straightforward approach would be to do it as part of the draft report of the review. Again, it's, it's just that, it's a draft. So this would be releasing it for stakeholder input, for county agencies to review, MDE to review, and for the public to review and comment. Um, this is probably going to take a few months. I think MDE's review period is about sixty days, so that's going to take some time. Uh, but that would give everybody, that would be transparent, give everybody an opportunity to weigh in on it. And then once we've had, have all those comments and we've got a, a close to final product, then that would be introduced in the form of a resolution, would go through the usual water and sewer plan amendment process. So I think either way, we get to the same place and follow the same process. I think it just makes more sense to incorporate those items into the report of the review and do it all at once instead of having the report of the review and then having these two other resolutions out there that are sort of on parallel tracks.
Got you. Okay.
And I believe Mr. Clark.
Yeah.
On the status of the report.
Sure, again, Counsel, we've been working on the report of the review with all the municipalities, as well as the other water and sewer service providers, as well as the Talbot County Sanitary District. Uh, that document, we had developed a draft, I think, early, late last year. Uh, we've actually updated that, gotten comments back. Um, not only have we updated, let's say, the, the water and sewer sections for the town of TRAP, uh, we've also made sure we've got all the information for the town of Oxford, town of, uh, Easton, St. Michael's, as well as Talbot County Sanitary District. Uh, we've, we've, um, I guess, received the comments from the Public Works Advisory Board. We addressed those comments, we have posted their comments in response, in the county's response to those comments on the county website. We would do the same with the report of the review. Uh, one of the things as far as the twenty twenty-three report of the review, it is a digital plan in the sense that ultimately a lot of the links that are in the document, we have to post it on the website. So then, you know, if you want to access a, a permit, a wastewater discharge permit, you can just click on it and it'll take you right to that permit. Um, it's just located with MDE, so there's a lot of, um, you know, additional information. And that's one of the things we'd like to do is get that posted. Uh, again, it's the, and we would, as Patrick indicated, we've incorporated all of the discussions and, and, um, all of the changes associated with the water and sewer sections for the town TRAP. Uh, as we presented the, the County Council in the work session, draft map number eight and number seventeen are, will be included in that report of the review, so.
Okay.
So, uh, Mr. Clark, back, uh, it was either in the March or April Public Works Advisory Board meeting. Um, I think the, the advice from, from the board was, was that the report of review, of the report of the review would be nothing new. Uh, just a compilation of, of the, uh, the changes that had been made to the comprehensive water and sewer plan cumulatively since, uh, since the two thousand two comprehensive water and sewer plan. MDE's now made clear that, that this requires council action, the new map requires council action. And so we'd, we'd be asking, does that change now the review, the, the way the comprehensive water and sewer plan, report of the review, uh, is, is reviewed would, uh, because it, it now presumably, the whole report would need to go to the, it's already with Public Works Advisory Board. We already get their advice on this, but also for, to the Planning Commission for finding of consistency.
Yeah, and just for the, be clear, the Public Works Advisory Board and the Planning Commission have not reviewed the latest update.
Sure.
So they've not been provided that document, so we need to get that.
That will be required as part of the process.
Exactly, and I think for us to put this on the county website, we have not shared that, the latest update associated with that. That's why we're trying to get you all's per, permission to do that, is to put that report on. But to your point, once the, uh, once that does go through the review process, it will actually be, uh, the report of the review would be, uh, reviewed by the Mayor Department of the Environment, as well as the Mayor Department of Planning. And it, and then we'll probably get comments from them, we'll have to then respond to those comments. And the game plan would be, is once we have, let's say, MDE's comments, as well as comments from the general public, um, and the Public Works Advisory Board and the Planning Commission, we would then work to update the document to incorporate those comments and then come back to the County Council and look at the, having the resolution pro, uh, processed through the standard process of updating the comp water and sewer plan. We did this, I guess, back with the, um, in two thousand and two. It was actually put together that way and then presented in a resolution and adopted under resolution, I think it's one hundred at the time, so. But yes, I think for, for the county at this point, yes, it would be, uh, once we've gotten, let's say, the final draft document ready to go, then that would be, you know, we would then present that to the County Council in a resolution to adopt that, uh, report of the review.
So if, if the, if the map were to be addressed in a standalone resolution, and that standalone resolution goes through the Public Works Advisory Board and the Planning Commission for that finding consistency comes back to the Council for approval before it heads off to MDE. If that is handled separately and the report of, of the review then incorporating this, this, uh, this change uh, would, would have nothing new, nothing, no changes of facts, merely a compilation of, of past council actions, including this, what will be then a recent council action.
Correct.
Does the report of the, does the report of the review, uh, if this is addressed separately, does that require a finding of consistency from the Planning Commission?
Yes. What'll end up happening, if the Council chose to do a separate resolution for, let's say, the town of TRAP, I think in that resolution, it would have, we would have to have the information in, for that resolution for the town of TRAP showing the water and sewer service descriptions, as well as the new updated maps. They would then have to be incorporated in the twenty, let's say, the twenty twenty-three report of the review. We would then have to go through the same process, again, working with the County Council, as well as posting that report of the review and go through another amendment resolution or to adopt the twenty twenty-three report of the review. So you do it, the amendment process twice. So in this case, you actually just have to do it one time if you go with the report of the review.
And I would also add, I think it's, particularly with the maps, it's a bit messy to do it separately because we're going from the current two-map system to a one-map system. So if we were to say adopt that map that really is just showing the existing classifications that have already been adopted for the town, for the water and sewer, you would have, the town of TRAP would have a, a water map and a sewer map that's different from every other part of the county until the report of the review is updated to catch up. Whereas if you do it as part of the report of the review, it's all done at the same time and all the maps are consistent. And we're not, again, we're not, we're not changing any classifications at this time. It's simply saying, these are what the classifications are as have been adopted. We wouldn't, in other words, we wouldn't be asking the Planning Commission to find that, um, the, the existing classifications are consistent with the comprehensive plan. It doesn't really make sense because they've already made that finding and then the Council's already adopted these resolutions and, and approved them.
Would, would, would Planning Commission approval be necessary on that second round? If, if the report of the review did not introduce any change? Would it require a Planning Commission finding of consistency?
The plan as a whole to adopt the new plan?
Yes.
No, no, not the plan, not, not a new comprehensive water and sewer plan.
Okay.
Just the report of the review.
The, the, in my opinion, Counsel, the report of the review would have to go through a resolution process and would have to be adopted by the County Councils.
I, I agree with that part, but would that process include a Planning Commission finding of consistency?
I believe it should.
I believe it, I believe it should as well. I think it goes through the, the water and sewer plan amendment process.
And when we.
But it's not an amendment?
It would be.
But you're adopting it as your new, you're superseding the prior, the existing report of the review with a new one. You're replacing it, so.
There is no, there is no prior report of the review.
The twen, the two thousand and two report of the review.
That's the comprehensive water and sewer plan. That's not the report of, of the review.
No, we actually, the, the, the comp water and sewer plan, we had the nineteen ninety-two update of the comp water and sewer plan. And then two thousand and two, we did a two thousand and two report of the review. And now, now we're working on twenty twenty-three report of the review. When the County Council at the time, I think it was in two thousand and four, adopted Resolution one hundred to adopt the twenty, uh, two thousand and two report of the review. So that became the new basis of our comp water and sewer plan mapping and documents. So I think what, what a lot of people, you know, to help explain this, I think it was actually the Planning Commission Chairman that mentioned this. The report of the review is almost like balancing your checkbook. So you're basically going back in time. So in nineteen ninety-two, there were resolutions that were made or adopted. The two thousand and two took all those past resolutions from nineteen ninety-two and then ultimately created the new maps starting at that point in two thousand and two. Now the twenty twenty-three is going to take those maps, or the resolutions and the map changes and the sewer, water sewer description changes, and we're now going to basically balance the checkbook again. And so that would have to be done through a resolution and, in my opinion, the Planning Commission, as well as the Public Works Advisory Board, would have to review it and provide a recommendation. For the Planning Commission, it would be of finding a consist, consistency with the comp plan.
Are we now conflating the report of the review and the comprehensive water and sewer plan update? Are they one and the same now?
Right, right now, MDE and the county are looking at this as, yes, this is the comp water and sewer plan update at this point in time. What we are going to work on now is ultimately the next phase, which is to do a comprehensive update of the comp water and sewer plan. And that is now, we're looking at doing that digitally. So we bring in all those sections. Um, right now, what I would say, the report of the review includes all the water and sewer descriptions and the mapping that would have, that would be in the comprehensive water and sewer plan. What we're going to try and do now with the comprehensive update is take those sections such as geology, the demographics that were incorporated in the twenty sixteen comp plan, those items we're going to bring in and basically into the comp water and sewer plan. So now we're, we'd be consistent with all that information with the twenty sixteen comprehensive plan.
Okay, so now, so those are separate documents. First, the report of the review, which compiles all this, all these past resolutions. And then when we're finished with that, use that information for the new comprehensive water and sewer plan update.
Correct.
So the report of the review itself, in the absence, obviously, the new comprehensive water and sewer plan, because it's a forward-looking document, requires, requires that review. The, that finding of consistency. But the report of review with nothing new in it also requires that?
Yes, because it's changing and modifying the maps. We're, I, I guess the one thing I always said.
But what if it is not changing and modifying the maps?
Well, technically, but we're incorporating those resolutions. But we're, we, we don't have any administrative procedure for the county to say, these are the new maps. So that's the one disadvantage we have. We can go and say, well, this resolution changed this, this resolution changed that. But we would need to bring all those into one map. And that's what we're trying to do under the report of the review, say, look, these are all these resolutions that mod, that modified these maps. Now these are the new maps.
So, so they are new maps, but they're not new classifications?
Correct.
Understood, I understand the distinction, yes.
And also with the map, again, going back to the map, we're not, again, we're not changing any of the existing classifications in the, in the town, so it, I think it makes it more awkward and cumbersome to do it as its own resolution because at the end of the day, you're going to be left with something that's sort, that really fits into the report of the review but is being done outside of that process.
Though, though that would be the ordinary process and perhaps better for, uh, wouldn't that, wouldn't that be open if you were looking at that in isolation? For, for the public, for the public review?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think one of the things I would say at this point, we've gotten to this point, we've updated the document. It's really important, in my opinion, to get it to the Planning Commission, get it to the Public Works Advisory Board, as well as the public. Let the public see this and let the public comment on it. That's, I think that's very important. And then, you know, at that point in time, MDE's also going to be reviewing this as well.
Right.
And, and the Mayor Department of Planning. So we're going to have a lot of different, you know, state agencies reviewing this. The general public has the opportunity to review this. This will actually be on the county website to be reviewed. And, um, the Public Works Advisory Board will be reviewing it and the Planning Commission. What we are also talking about, once we get this approval to move forward with it, we would set up a joint meeting with the Public Works Advisory Board and the Planning Commission, you know, three weeks after, you know, they've had an opportunity to review the document, to go ahead and discuss that and ultimately add any changes or comments or whatever they might recommend that we can then present to the County Council at that point.
So, Mr. Leshaw, are you getting to the point that you're thinking that it's better to take option number two at the request of MDE?
As a standalone, and, and with the second option laid out by MDE, which would be the standalone resolution?
Yeah, yeah, I, I mean, I, I will say I have to agree with Mr. Leshaw on that one. Because my question is, it says by August the thirty-first. So option number one is not going to be ready to submit to them by August thirty-first, right?
The, the report of the review?
Right.
Yes, it, we're ready, we are ready.
I just need to work with Mr. Clark to work in the EDU language and that it's ready to go. So we can have it, uh, a, a final draft product by the twenty-second for the Council to approve, to be published.
So we're going to have the updated maps, the final EDUs as part of the county's twenty twenty-three comprehensive water and sewer plan, all ready to go and updated to the public. It also says stakeholders for review and comment. So we're going to have all of that done by the thirty-first?
No, they just wanted, MDE just wants the document in their hands by the thirty-first. They don't expect all this to be done and adopted by the thirty-first. Whether we introduce a resolution on the twenty-second or the Council says, go ahead and post the, the draft report of the review, they just want it in their hands by the thirty-first and either, either one of those two paths would accomplish that.
When would the County Council have it to review prior to the, the meeting on the twenty-second, though? When will we be able to have time to actually comb through it?
Which one?
The option one, the review.
The full report of the review.
Yeah, the full report of the review.
I mean, we can get you a paper copy now. The problem is, is that if you go to the links for, uh, that are in that document, they will, it's just going to be, it'll be read text. I mean, we can provide that to you, I mean, that's something we can do. Um, it's, again, we've tried to make this a digital document. Our problem now is, is if we, you know, it's best to put it up on the county website so you then be able to go to the, access all the links on that website, you know, and then basically review it that way. But, I mean, if we, if the Council would like, we can get you a paper copy.
It's, it's what, maybe a hundred-page document, there about? It's, it's a fair amount to digest.
So with the report of review, basically, it's the whole thing. It's all the, the plans for the entire county, plus this one that MDE has had us focused on. And it would go through the process and be approved. The other way is, okay, well, we just do what MDE is asking for, for this particular map.
Right.
But then have to come back and consider the entire report of review again. So we'd be doing something, the same thing twice.
Yes.
So I'm understanding?
Yes.
Well, I, I guess, in the, in this timescale, do you want to digest the full document at, for the next meeting? Or do you want to focus on this one that, that meets MDE's deadline? And we will give ourselves time to do a proper review of the full report?
I believe we, I personally would need time to fully digest an over hundred and some-page document, and I would not want to rush it and have to prepare myself by the meeting on the twenty-second. That's not the path I would like to take.
I would just note that, I mean, Counsel, we did provide you with the draft document, probably, what, maybe six, eight months ago? I mean, so that was that big, thick paper document we did provide to you. So, I mean, there are editorial changes and some, some changes associated with that. But, I mean, we've tried to update that and we've tried to list all the comments that, that we've received on the county website as well. I mean, I would say at this point, it's still a draft document. So we, if we post it on the county website for the public, for, for you all, as well as the, the Planning Commission and the Public Works Advisory Board and the general public, everybody would have access to it now to review it. I mean, and again, this, as, as it relates to the town of TRAP, all the information we've discussed with the, uh, the, um, the County Council is in that document. There's no, there's nothing new that would be presented.
It just seems to be more efficient to do it in one fell swoop.
I agree.
Which is what you're proposing.
I, I agree entirely.
I agree, I do too.
That it would be more efficient, but would, would we, would we open ourselves up? I think addressing it as a separate resolution will insulate us from the, the charge of trying to. I think addressing it as a separate resolution will insulate us from the, the charge of trying to slip this map through.
But we're not.
Not that people are not paying attention to this, but this, this will allow it to be addressed in a timely fashion. And, and with, and it keeps it simple, in a way. Uh, it, it keeps the, the adoption of that map a simple matter, and gives us time then to fully digest the report of the review.
Well, to be clear, I think if we were doing it as a standalone resolution, it would really just be to clarify that the properties that were incorrectly shown in the exhibits of two eighty-one are not part of the resolution. It wouldn't be changing anything that was, it wouldn't be changing the properties that were properly classified by two eighty-one, so.
Understood.
I mean, we can certainly proceed that way if that's the, the council's direction.
I do think it, it would be simpler that way. I, I will have to agree with Mr. Leshar on that. And allows us time to really review.
So, I wanna ask, I haven't said anything. So it, it's, so I understand this. It, it's ready for review now?
Thank you.
Boom. So, so, Mr. Leshar, help me understand about what the difference would be just giving that document to MDE now versus separating, giving them one thing?
Oh, it's not about MDE's review, it's about our opportunity to review. Our, our opportunity to digest this as, and, and, and say, we are, we are ready to say this is, to take ownership of this. We're ready to approve it. We're ready to pass it on to MDE. It's not really about MDE's. MDE's going to take the, uh, the ordinary amount of time to review it, one way or the other.
But what was the twenty-second? You said there's a deadline of the twenty-second?
It's the thirty-first, but your only meeting after tonight is, would be the twenty-second. So that would be the meeting, unless you schedule a special meeting. So that would be, have to be the meeting at which either the resolutions would be introduced, or you would authorize the, the release of the report of review.
So, so what you're saying, you feel comfortable releasing everything but that one map?
Well-
Without seeing it?
I, I've had the opportunity to digest this, and, and apparently the, the council has too, although it may not be fresh in your mind. Uh, nor may it have had, uh, it may not have had the urgency when, when it got dumped on your, on your desk before. If we, if we focus on, on the map, the trap map as a standalone resolution, it allows us to simply focus on that and not worry about what else might be in this document that might not have, um, caught our attention.
I don't understand that, so I, I don't, I don't-
Are you, well, maybe you don't intend to read the whole document, and that's fine.
I, I am, I am gonna read it, and, and I just, I, I just don't, I can't get it clear why you wouldn't worry about ninety-nine percent of it, and you're breaking this one out.
This, every, this is the one piece that would be a change. What MDE says constitutes a change. The rest is simply a compilation of prior changes that the council has already adopted.
The change is going from two maps to one map?
It's not a change, it's a correction.
That's it.
Yes.
And very quickly too, I mean, what I'd also say is, for the town of, like, town of Easton, we have the two maps as well. We're going from two maps in the two thousand and two to one map. Um, I'd also note that within the Easton wastewater system, they had the, I was saying, the old lagoon system that was at the time. Uh, in two thousand and eight, they upgraded their wastewater treatment plant with E and R technology, a bar and flow process. So that information is not in the two thousand and two document. So that would incorporate all the new wastewater facilities that they have today under the twenty twenty-three report of the review. So a lot of that information would be upgraded. Same thing for the sanitary district. We actually upgraded our wastewater treatment plant in, um, I think it was March of twenty twenty-eight, or two thousand and eight. That information is not provided in the two thousand and two document, but it is gonna basically be updated in the twenty twenty-three document, so, uh, you know, just for the council.
And regarding the EDUs and phasing, that was act, originally requested by MDE back in twenty twenty when they approved two eighty-one. So it's not, uh, well, we got this, you know, this process kinda started in April. It's not, the request is not new, so this is, I think, consistent with the cons, if you were to include in the plan, it's consistent with the concept of it being a, a balancing of the checkbook.
Okay, so we need to, so we're gonna need to vote on this, I guess. Okay, so, so.
Jessica has a question.
If, if everybody can just really speak through the mic and the microphone-
Yep, no problem.
Sure.
So, so we've got two things on the table. We either, we either split it out, put trap maps, or we keep it all in the same. It, it's one or the other.
You don't, and you don't necessarily have to do both the same way. It's, it would be two resolutions, one regarding the, the map, and one, maps, and one regarding the, the EDUs and phasing. So you may collectively feel that the maps belong in the report of the view, but the EDUs don't, or, or vice versa. So you have a few options there.
The, the EDUs are not in Resolution two eighty-one?
Not currently, no.
So that's new information?
It is new information.
That would not be in the report of, of review? Without incorporation into, into a, a, a resolution?
Let, let him answer the question.
Okay.
Right now, we ha, I have updated the water and sewer sections for the town of Trap to include the EDUs. So that would be in the twenty twenty-three report of the review.
So it would be in the report of review?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
And it would still go through the same process?
So, so the report of the, of review will not be as, as stated back in the public works advisory board meeting, uh, simple statement of pre-existing facts? There will be new elements if we go about it this way?
We, we are trying to bring it up to date with all the, the information, yes. We are trying to do that. I, I would say if the council, I mean, I would say if the council decides to move in two separate paths, let's say you're gonna go with the town of Trap and focus on that in one resolution, I guess I would just ask the council, can we at least provide, if we're providing you all with a paper document, if we can also provide that paper document to the planning commission and the public works advisory board, so they can start their reviews as well?
So I guess my question is, if we use option one, right, what is the process from here? If we vote to go with option one, what's the process?
Option one being the report of review?
Yes, report of review.
Option one for the review, we would, uh, under that, we would, because it's a digital document, we would post that up on the county website. We would provide the links to the county website, to MDE, MDP, the planning commission, the public works advisory board. Because it's on the county website, it would then become public. The, the council would also have access to it as well. MDE is gonna probably take up to ninety days reviewing that document. So, and, and they will, they're the clearinghouse. They're gonna be, they're gonna be collecting that information from the Maryland Department of Planning. They'll probably send it over to the Department of Natural Resources, resources for review as well. So they'll be collecting their comments. They'll then forward those comments to us, once that's been done. And we'll also be collecting comments from the public works advisory board and the planning commission. Option two, if you chose to just-
And then after all that process?
So after that process, just to clarify, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
So, once all that review and, and, and information, comment gathering happens, then it would be introduced, there would be a resolution introduced to adopt it, and then it would have to go through the same comprehensive water and sewer plan amendment review process that we typically follow. So it would be, you're doing the same thing with more review and in one, but one process instead of having essentially three resolutions.
And the report of review would include the information that MDE is requesting relative to the EDUs?
Yes.
So it'd be all in one package?
Yes.
And, and, and Mr. Patrick, or Thomas is correct. This would go through the same process of the comp water sewer plan. So the council would basically have to introduce a resolution after they finalize that document, introduce a resolution adopting the twenty twenty-three report of the review. Once the county councils had the public hearing, voted on it, we would then forward that up to MDE for their review and approval after the finding of consistency by the planning commission. And at that point, if the council voted in favor of that document, and was MDE approving that document, that becomes the final report of the review, twenty twenty-three.
Time frame for the process?
I would say probably, you know, if we're lucky, you know, I don't know if it's be the end of the year, but it's gonna be close. You know, either the end of the year or first of next year.
Yeah, I think if we assume that if you were to approve its release on the twenty-second, if MDE takes ninety days, so that puts us into November.
Yeah.
You're introducing, you're probably introducing a resolution in December or January, and then with that process, it would be eligible for a vote roughly a month or so thereafter.
Let me ask this question. If you were to do it the two-step process, and just focus on this map and EDUs, and it gets approved, and then it gets incorporated in the report of review, which then comes back to, for approval, correct? It's an opportunity to then set it aside or vote against it because it's coming up for review a second time? Are you exposing it to that? Do you follow what I'm saying? You approve it, but then you have to approve it again when you do it in the report of review?
Right. You could run that risk.
Excuse me?
I, I think you could run that risk, yeah.
But I don't think you would be changing the water and sewer classifications of properties.
No, I'm not saying you would change it, but if you, if it goes through the process, just the single-
Amendment?
Amendment. And then that gets included. Then we come back and we do the whole report of review of all of them, and it's included in that. There's an opportunity to not, not approve it. Because you can challenge any aspect of the report of review, correct?
Yes.
Or propose amendments.
Yeah.
All right, all right, so.
So the presumption is that if the report of the view is simply incorporating only council-passed actions, resolutions that have been adopted, there wouldn't be anything controversial about the report of the review?
You don't know that. I mean, you don't know what could come up.
From who?
I don't know. I'm just saying. You're, you're voting on something twice.
Mr. Council President, can I take the opportunity to ask a question of both Mr. Clark and Mr. Thomas?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Certainly, uh, just one real simple question for both of you. Is there any difference between options one and options two here, uh, in, in regards to transparency to the public and all of our, uh, our stakeholders?
In my opinion, no. The, the stakeholders and the public will be seeing all the documents.
Okay. So, 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 so we're, we're as transparent as we can be, whether we choose the, you know, the, the first option or the report of the review option, or whether we do the, uh, the other option, correct?
Yes, and I think I actually, and I, I think I said this earlier, but I think option two is more, gives more, because it, the, the, if you're, again, if you're assuming like a sixty to ninety-day review period, gives, actually gives the public even more time to, to digest and, and comment on the document as a whole, including the, any sections that, you know, of interest to any one member.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Could you explain that again? I'm sorry, I didn't follow that.
So if it's, if we, if we were to introduce a resolution on the twenty-second, then it's gonna go to the planning commission in, probably in October at that point, and then be voted on by, uh, council, probably a public hearing and vote on in October. And then that's, that's, so that's, what, not even two months? But through the, through the report of the review process, you know, it's two, two to three months just for reviewing and comment before resolution is even introduced.
Yeah, that's my point.
And then there's gonna be public, you know, public hea, and there'll be, as Ray said, work sessions and the, the public hearings that are required by law. So it's actually more opportunity for public review and comment.
All right, we'll, we'll be ready to vote on option one. So you wanna start with option one? And say if we wanna, you wanna read the, the, the motion on number one?
Being the report of review?
Right.
Is there a motion?
Huh?
Is there a motion?
No, there's no motion.
Oh, somebody has to make a motion, right?
Right, well, I was, I was getting ready that, there. I was getting ready, I wanted her actually to, to read the motion.
Well, are you gonna read option one?
Uh, option one as, yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm getting there.
Submit the updated maps and finalized EDUs as part of the county's two thousand twenty-three comprehensive water sewer plan update. What the county refers to as the report of the review to MDE and other required stakeholders for review and comment.
Okay, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
She's so moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll make a second.
Okay. We got a motion second to do option one. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Leshar?
Nay.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay, option one. Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, all right, let's move on. Okay. Madam Secretary, eligible for vote. Could you go ahead and, um?
Excuse me?
We're, we're getting ready, eligible for vote, fifteen, fifteen thirty-eight.
Oh.
Okay.
Got it.
You got it, okay. Could you, could you go ahead and read that into the record?
Bill number fifteen thirty-eight, a bill to authorize improvements to an expansion of the Chapel District Elementary School.
Okay. A little discussion. A little discussion.
Uh, you know, I, I think that we, we heard, we heard during the hearing about the importance to advance this project. Uh, we, uh, the previous council actually postponed, uh, the replacement of the roof of this school uh, because of anticipating this broader project. Didn't, didn't make any sense to replace the roof when we were gonna go right back and replace all the mechanical equipment that sits on that roof and disturb a brand-new roof. Um, and, uh, the, uh, our schools do have, do have the state matching funds lined up for this. Uh, if, uh, if we don't take advantage of this, we, we move to the back of the line. So it's, I think it's, it's pretty important to, uh, advance the, the Chapel District Elementary School project at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Leshar. Any other questions? Discussion? Okay. Um, do, okay, um, yes.
Mr. Callahan, Mr. Step needs to step away from the meeting. He has left absentee ballots.
Okay, that's great. Thank you, Mr. Step. Appreciate it. Okay, all right, um, okay, so we're ready for the vote? Okay, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Leshar?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Okay. All right, next eligible vote is fifteen forty-five.
I wanted to make a motion to defer consideration of this, pending, um, working on a possible amendment for it to be considered.
Okay.
Fifteen forty-five?
Fifteen forty-five, yes.
Uh-huh.
So I guess the motion would be to postpone a vote?
Should, should that, should that be done by motion, or, or simply council consensus to, uh, defer action until the second meeting, meeting in August?
I think we need a motion.
We need a motion.
Yeah, we need a motion.
There's a motion on the floor.
I, I will, I will second.
Okay, we got a, a motion and a second to go ahead and, um, to delay fifteen forty-five and work on, um, work on-
An amendment.
Amendment. Um, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Leshar? Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, next would be a bill of fifteen forty-six, Madam Secretary.
Bill number fifteen forty-six, a bill to authorize a feasibility study for and possible future construction of Talbot County Visitor Center.
Okay. Any discussion?
Well, again, this, this is, this is simply a feasibility study, this is a smaller-dollar item, this simply paves the way for, for, uh, for a future, uh, visitor center. Uh, this is, this is a modest step to move, to move that project forward that has been a goal for, uh, economic development and tourism. And, uh, I, I think, I think it makes sense for us to move forward with this modest step at this time.
Okay, great. Any other comments? Okay, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Okay. All right, then, we're ready for Clay stuff, okay?
For a county manager report this evening, uh, council, we have four items. I would like to call Cassandra Van Hoosier up, the Director of Economic Development and Tourism, to discuss a matter with you. She's requesting a letter, council's consideration, to send a letter of support for the establishment of Chesapeake National Recreation Area as part of the national park system. And I think she has Alyssa Hastings, a representative for Senator Van Hollen's office. So greetings, and they'll talk to you about this matter.
Welcome.
Good evening, council, thank you so much for having us and discussing this matter tonight. Um, I received an email several weeks ago asking that we support, uh, in economic development and in tourism, uh, the Chesapeake National Recreation Area. In discussing it with Clay, uh, he thought it was better that we bring this to the council. Uh, other counties have done that, and so I issued the letter to you asking you to consider supporting the legislation. This is federal legislation, and, uh, it is supported by Senator Van Hollen and Congressman Sarbans. And in your packet, um, I gave you a whole lot of stuff. One is the legislation, which was introduced in the Senate on July twenty-seventh. Um, you had key points about the advantages of a national recreation area, which are prodigious when it comes to economic development and tourism. And I, there's a summary of the changes that were made to the legislation as a result of public input. And then you have the maps and the descriptions of the five proposed sites. Now, to be clear, this is not a proposal that would make the entire Chesapeake Bay a national recreation area. Uh, at this time, there are five sites, and you have those sites, uh, maps and descriptions in your packet. Uh, now, I've been to a number of, uh, sessions about this, I feel like I understand it uh, and support it from economic development and tourism perspective. Uh, but I really wanna turn it over to Alyssa and ask her, uh, to, uh, give a deeper dive into, uh, why, um, her employer has introduced this legislation. Alyssa, thank you for being with us.
Thank you so much, um, Cassandra, and, um, to the council, thank you so much for having me. I realize this is my first time coming before you since I've stepped into the position of, um, Eastern Shore Regional Director for Senator Van Hollen, so thank you so much for having me. And first and foremost, just wanna make sure that you know how to reach us. Our office is here to support you in all of your efforts, any issues you have that are connected to the federal government, um, send, send them my, my way. I'm happy to, to connect with you on any issues and help get, um, any matters resolved for any of your constituents. So just wanted to, to lay the groundwork there and make sure that you, um, you know who I am. Um, but also, tonight we're talking about the Chesapeake National Recreation Area. Um, so this is a, um, what this would do would be to designate the, um, Chesapeake National Recreation Area, bringing national recognition to the Chesapeake Bay region, um, by authorizing the National Park Service to enter into agreements with those handful of sites, um, that Cassandra mentioned. Um, and it also creates the ability to add new sites in the future, but only with voluntary, um, only through a voluntary process, this site, this process is only focused on the land, so it doesn't add any additional restrictions or regulations as far as, um, what we can do within our waterways. But it would create the possibility for more sites to be added in the future on a, um, community input basis along with, um, our, the steering committee. So, um, I want to just highlight a few, um, points and the connection to the bay economy. Um, so the Chesapeake National Recreation Area will elevate the Chesapeake Bay by bringing additional local and national recognition to the region and making substantial contribution to the economy. We've seen that when, um, visitors come to visit national parks, for example, they often come and eat in our local restaurants, stay in our hotels. There's a whole bunch of, um, trickle-down effects that come from those types of tourism dollars being spent in our local communities. Though we do recognize that there are some areas within the Chesapeake Bay watershed that are already, um, experiencing a high level of visitors and do not need any additional, um, folks visiting. So, um, we do wanna just stress again that, that this does not, um, that this is a strictly voluntary program, that all of the sites would have to be, uh, there'd be a long process to include any sites. Um, and many, many studies that would be included in each one of those. Um, so I think that's a broad overview, and then I wanted to open it up to any questions. Um, we're happy to, if I don't know the answer, then I'm gonna bring them back to the team, um, and provide any information that you need.
Okay. Discussion?
Um, yes.
Yeah, okay.
My, my issue is, I think that, um, before the council votes on this, um, that there ought to be a public hearing and then we hear from the public. And so I would move that we, um, reschedule this matter for a public hearing and then a vote.
A, 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 a hearing or a work session?
Well, work session, aware, give the public an opportunity to comment on it so that we get input from the public before we vote. And I think the fact that the Senate is in recess anyway, um, I think there's time for us to, to do that.
Would that, and, and it sounds like, Cassandra, that you're sort of knee-deep into it and understand it?
I, I think I do.
Yeah, and you could run a work session for us.
Absolutely, we can, between Alyssa and I, and her colleagues, who I've spoken to several times actually, about this issue. I'm more than happy to, um, to engineer a work session with you all and, and invite the public. I have spoken to the watermen here, who are not actually for this, I'm sure you've gotten some calls from them.
Yeah.
And, you know, we have stressed that it's land-based, and I believe, uh, the senator's team has made some, um, amendments to the legislation before it was introduced. There's been a lot of public comment, but I would love the idea of having, um, a session here where Talbot County, uh, people can hear and, and give input. Uh, this is really important to us, having that arrowhead of the National Park Service on any of our attractions, uh, would be, uh, amazing. We do not have a national park, we only have two small state parks, and so I think there's some opportunity here. Um, and, uh, one of the questions I addressed in my letter is that there are no, currently of the five sites, none of them are on the eastern shore, but because the eastern shore is integral to the Chesapeake Bay, it's really important that, um, the eastern shore counties consider it appropriately, and this would be a way to do that, so we're happy to do that, Alyssa and I.
Okay, well, that's great, I, I think that's, yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify that a work session would allow public comment.
Absolutely.
I just wanted, I just wanted to make that clear.
No problem, no problem. So I think, I think that, Mr. Stamp, were you getting ready to say something?
Well, no, the, the president, the president, it's at your discretion whether you want open comment at a work session, but you can, if you're at staff, we can work.
I think we do, Mr. Stamp, I, I think, I think this is a good thing. It does, I, I do hesitate, because that was really one of my questions, was the watermen, you know, they're scared of their territory, and I don't blame them, you know? So once, once the federal government comes in here, everybody gets a little nervous of what they're gonna take over. So I, I, I think, you know, we kinda clear the air a little bit with that, and, you know, allow them to, um, uh, to, to voice their concerns, you know, so, so everybody's on the same page.
And maybe to, to promote mutual understanding.
Absolutely.
The, the clear language, uh, on, on page eleven of, of the act is that nothing in this act, uh, impacts or otherwise affects statutory or regulatory authority with respect to navigation or regulation of commercial or recreational fishing activities or shellfish, aquaculture in the Chesapeake Bay or tributaries of the Chesapeake Bay. Uh, and nothing in this act enlarges or dismin, or diminishes the jurisdiction of a state, including the jurisdiction or authority of a state with respect to fish and wildlife management. So, uh, really, the, the, the federal government is prohibited from going on that territory. And this is an opportunity, this is an opportunity to educate, uh, our citizens on, on that, the content of that act and assuage those concerns.
Um, just one question, the public hearings that were held, where were they held?
So, that's a good question, because, um, before I came on board, so I came on board last October, um, so far, I'm aware of, um, a briefing that was done for all state and local elected officials in, um, January, and then most recently, we held another, um, virtual briefing with Eastern Shore and Hartford County and, um, the Eastern Shore delegation. But that did, um, come about quickly, and I know not everyone had the ability to attend because it was.
And I was your designated on that, I believe, Mr. Callahan sent me in his place.
There you go.
So it, I, I welcome the opportunity to have an open discussion about it, and I'm sure the senator's staff do too.
And then last question, um, have the other eastern shore counties provided you with a letter thus far?
So, so far, we have received a letter of support from Somerset County Economic Development, um, and we have not gone before any other, uh, this, this is our first time going before a, a council or commissioner on the body.
Good.
Sounds good.
Okay, so, um, yeah, could you work together?
We'll work with, uh, Ms. Moran and Get a Date and, and Jessica, and make sure it's convenient, and, uh, we'll advertise it appropriately, and we'll, we'll bring it to the house.
Okay, looking forward to it.
One more question, so is that something we would, we would wanna have specifically for Talbot County? Or would we wanna open it up to other counties on the shore just as a unified effort? To kill one bird.
Well, it, it, I mean, they could come, I mean, it's gonna be announced, so that, you know, I, I would, I would stick with our protocol, so to speak, do with the county, but, you know, people are welcome to come.
So I think it's important that we include our municipalities in this, so, because, you know, we're, we're sitting in the middle of the bay. And we have, you know, and even our villages, like Tillman, uh, we might wanna invite some participation, because I think it's really important that we, we hear from all Talbot County.
Absolutely, agree, yep, okay.
We're good?
Yeah, we're good. Sorry it took so long to get to you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome to the new job now.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Mr. Stamp, you wanna keep going?
Yep, sure, all right, Mr. Council President, thank you. Uh, the next item I have, I'll call Rich Sutter, your golf professional up, uh, and the, and the manager for the Hog Neck Golf Course.
Okay.
Uh, they're requesting, uh, council's approval to enter contract for a restroom trailer for the Hog Neck Golf Course Pavilion. Uh, this, uh, restroom trailer, uh, would be contracted for the amount of one hundred and seven thousand five hundred dollars. They obtained three proposals, and the lowest, uh, this, the one hundred and seven thou, thousand five hundred dollars is the low bid. There are sufficient funds in the budget for the purchase, and, uh, Rich is here to discuss more.
Good evening, good evening, how are you?
I'm doing good.
Good, good. So you're, you're ready, you're ready to put that porta potty up there, are you?
Well, after all the raised comments, yeah, this seems pretty small.
Yeah, I got you, I got you. So, um, I, I, um, the pavilion is, uh, a huge success.
Yeah, it is, we've had lots of interest in, uh, booking events in there, but the one stumbling block is the lack of restroom function right there.
Yeah, I got you.
We've done a few events where we've, uh, transported people by golf cart up to the golf shop to use the restrooms there, but, you know, if you gotta follow weather or anything, it's a, it's a big inconvenience. So this would put us to where we can start selling that and be aggressive in getting groups and group business out there.
And, and, you know, just thinking through sort of the, the future of, of the, the golf course, the, the other sort of, um, the other big thing that we're getting ready to put there, that you're getting ready to, to do, it, it, explain to the public what you're getting ready to do as far as the, um, top golf stuff.
Okay, uh, let's not use that term.
Okay, well, whatever term you wanna use.
Enhance, enhance practice facility.
There you go.
Yeah, so, um, just to divert, uh, to that, what Chuck was asking about, is we have a current driving range where we have a continuous mat. Uh, we can have about fifteen people on that mat hitting at a time. And what we're looking to do is build a two-tiered structure that's covered, um, so we can double our hitting space out there. And then it would be, uh, propane heaters in the wintertime, which would extend, uh, our season into the winter. Um, in the really hot, muggy time of the year, like this time of year, have it covered so people can be out there. And then when it's raining, so basically it insulates us from a business model to where we can be busy all the time.
Right.
Uh, we finished our project of putting the lighting in the parking lot, uh, back in, um, late June, early July. So we have, uh, lights out there now, so we can host events in the evenings. And then the idea would be able to extend our hours at the driving range into the evening hours. Uh, so right now, our business model, we can only, uh, drive revenue sunup to sundown. Uh, this would be a game changer for us to create a different business model out there to bring revenue in in the evenings. Uh, one of the things that we lack here in Talbot County, and I don't think anybody will question it, uh, lack of activities in the evening hours, you know? If you're not into the bowling alley in the evening, or the movie theater, or the bar scene, you're pretty much out of luck in Talbot County in the evening. So this would be a great, uh, family experience, uh, individuals, uh, you know, young, old, skinny, fat, tall, it doesn't make it, it's open to everybody, and, uh, it would be a great thing to have here in Talbot County, um, and, and at Hog Neck Golf Course.
So lead into that, but my point is, is the whole process of people understanding that this, this bathroom that we're doing, it, it really, it really helps do a diversity of a lot of things.
It does, you know, and it helps us, you know, to bring more people to Hog Neck and to get more people out there to enjoy Hog Neck, and not strictly just people playing the golf course.
Yeah, so, okay.
No questions.
We're good? Okay, we just need a motion and?
I'll, I'll, I'll move to, uh, approve the, uh, the purchase.
Okay, got a second? Okay, got a motion second, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Um, Epstein.
Okay.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you for support.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next, uh, invite, uh, Brian Moore up, he's the Director of, uh, Facilities Maintenance and the Superintendent of Roads. He's here this evening, as you read in your agenda packet, he's requesting council approval to award a contract for electrical automated, two electrical automation services incorporated in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand seven hundred and two dollars and fifty cents for a new chiller for the courthouse. The, uh, county will be piggybacking, if approved, on a state contract. There are sufficient funds in FY twenty-four budget. This is, uh, and has been a standing capital improvement project. And Brian is here to answer any detailed questions you might have. Brian?
Yes, evening, council. As, as Clay summarized, this is to replace the chiller which does the cooling for the courthouse complex. Um, it's been in the budget while, to replace it, time is of essence because, um, the lead time on this equipment can be up to six months, so I'm already behind schedule to get this order. So this legislation today allows me to get the chiller order and the process, and get the process going so we can hopefully do it, this project this winter.
Great.
So I can get in detail, but that's the, the gist of it.
Okay, is there a motion?
I, I, I appreciate, I appreciate your being on top of these maintenance needs and tackling them before, uh, before they fail, uh, before we need Band-Aid repairs and, and such, uh, and, uh, you know that this is getting to the end of its life cycle. So, uh, I'll, I'll move for approval.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay.
Brian, you did an outstanding job.
Hey, Brian, don't go anywhere, because I know you're gonna hate this, okay? All right, yep, yep, I was gonna, I want you here when I say this, okay? So, um, last night, um, when I contacted you last night, um, we had sort of somewhat of, you know, bad weather coming in, emergency situation, and I had clients call me. So you really, you and your team stepped up to the plate to help that community. So I, I can tell you that sometimes we, you know, have to do some things that maybe we're not sure of, but I can tell you that you and Mr. Stamp and his staff, I really appreciate you taking care of those people, because we had some big trees fall over, and two, two, one client, one client that called me, had two cars that were completely crushed with, with, with trees. It was down to Bosman, down Quaker Neck Road, down, you know, down Vanderburg Lane. Um, and it, it, a, a big tree just barely missed a, um, a, a big house till. So I do wanna thank you and your team, and, um, it was one of these things that were rare for me to, to sort of, it was an emergency situation. So I do, I do really thank you for, you know, stepping up and taking care of that too, because the fire department was there, you were there, so I, I commend you with good work. And, and please tell your employees, um, that are working for you, because they're, you know, there, it was raining till, I mean, it was crazy rain.
Yeah, and, you know? We try to stay ahead of the curve the best we can.
We try to stay ahead of the curve the best we can, but obviously we can't prepare. But we have an own crew, and there's a lot of outages and a lot of stuff that happens behind the scene that Brian isn't aware of. It gets taken care of, so I appreciate that.
Yep, I do appreciate it too, buddy. Thank you. Yep.
Thank you, Brian. Next, we're invite Ray Clark back up, your county engineer. Ray's here to ask your permission to award bid twenty-three zero-nine Goldsboro Neck Road and Gleeb Road Culvert Replacement Project. Ray, you want to go ahead and provide information?
Again, we did put this out to bid, and we received one bid from David A. Bramble. The bid amount was for five hundred and nine one thousand, one hundred and nine dollars. I would note that David A. Bramble has done a lot of culvert replacement work for us. They did some work down, they did actually the culvert on Goldsboro Neck closer to Villa Road as well as, I think it was Kingston Road, they did the replacement there. And also on Dutchman's Lane, they did a culvert, this, not the big bottomless culvert, but down further towards, I guess it's, I can't remember the road name, but it's closer to the landfill. That being said, the, in addition to that, or I guess requesting an award for David A. Bramble, we also need to replace or move, I'm sorry, move to telephone pedestals, Verizon pedestals. So with that, we're also, I'm also requesting council's approval to go ahead and award the Verizon an amount of seventy-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-two cents to relocate those pedestals, which are actually going to be interfering with our ability to replace that culvert, so.
Okay, that's good. Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Ray.
Thanks, Ray.
I should let you know, and you as well as public knows, we will be holding a pre-construction meeting with the contractor. Once I have that information, we'll probably be, I'll be coming back to the county council. We are going to have to close that road for up to thirty days, so I just wanted to let you all know that in advance.
Okay.
So we'll give you the timeframes when that happens.
Thank you, Ray, appreciate that. Council, that concludes the county manager report for the night. But I did want to offer you just some thoughts real quick. You know, I sat here earlier in the council meeting, and we saw a lot of good presentations. And I just felt like I would offer to you that that is the true face of Talbot County. And that's what sets us aside from a lot of communities. And it's just, I know you're as proud as I am, but that is the true face of Talbot County. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Jess, would anybody sign up? Okay, we got, next is public comment. Okay. Sarah? No, don't let him know. Okay, all right, okay. All right, okay, move on to that, and let's go to council comments. Ms. Haye? No, you're good?
Yep. I just wanted to reiterate what Clay said. I was so impressed with our emergency teams and what they do and how they do it and their dedication and their hearts are really in it. And so proud to have them here in Talbot County.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Mr. Lusher?
Agree, and speaking of emergency services, the storm response, roads crew, emergency services, sheriff's office, all involved in a situation that put a number of people in danger around the county. Lost, some lost power, some lost, some saw property damage. But really quickly responded to by our personnel. And give my gratitude to all involved in that storm response. On another note, on my way here to council meeting today, I drove by Cruz on Miles River Road installing fiber cable. And I was slowed down, but boy was I, I've never been so happy to be stopped to wait for road workers than to see that rapid installation of fiber around the county. We're seeing it happen, we're seeing customers get connected. I am still getting constituent calls from folks who are looking at the Connect Talbot map and say, why can't it happen sooner? And getting assurances from our partners at East Utilities that in fact, this installation is moving along as rapidly as they can possibly make it work. And just a lot of gratitude for all who managed to get that funding. And once that funding is in place, have managed to get this installation of broadband to every unserved and underserved address in this county online.
Thank you, Mr. Lusher. And I will end this, like my colleague said, far as staff tonight, we had a very special meeting tonight when it come to emergency services and saving lives. And that was, that was pretty special. And it's, it's, it's something to be proud of being in and being part of, that's for sure. Because we do have some of the best emergency services that I've ever seen. And it's good to know that we have not only them, but like you said, Mr. Lusher, we've got road crews that respond in an emergency situation. So, Mr. Stamp, you've got, you've got a good crew behind you, that's for sure. And, you know, we've worked hard through the years to get department heads that really step up and between the department heads and all the employees, you know, because we have five hundred or so, you know, roughly.
Full and part-time.
Yeah, full and part-time. So, you know, it's, it's, you know, let, you know, when you, when you see the gentleman that's, that his son saved his life and you see what that took, it took a team to do that. You know, it took twenty people to do that, to save that life. And like the wife said, I mean, it just changed their life. So not only that, it's like last night when a couple of people called me, you know. It felt good that we could help them as a council, and, you know, when they reach out to us. And that's what we're here for, you know, that's what, that's what we're setting up here to do, to help and respond to emergencies, to help people. So I'm proud to be part of it, and you guys have done a great job doing that for us and constituents. Okay. Lusher?
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, August twenty-second, beginning at five o'clock PM. The council will be convening an open session at three-thirty PM and then adjourning into closed session to discuss matters as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. Therefore, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene as noted?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second to adjourn, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Yeah, okay.
Ms. Haye?
Okay.
Aye.
Okay, thanks a lot, appreciate everything.